Thank you wholeheartedly. As public servants, in life, we should be bear ye one another's burdens. And during this, especially this type of the year, that applies, but any time of the year, and not just one season, all seasons. You know, we are to show warmth, not just against the cold, but in our hearts. This is to be all year long. Amen.
Stand up for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Reesner. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Reesner.
You got it right.
Oh, he's out. That's right. I'm sorry. I forgot the wrong one. Councilmember Snee.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Dougherty.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Horniman.
Here.
And Councilmember Jones.
Here.
As the records show, we have six of seven councilmembers present this evening. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing regarding ordinance responding to petition numbers 2501 through 2504, vacating two alleys off of Jackson Street running east and west between Fairview Avenue and Jackson Street, an alley running east and west between Jackson Street and South Sandusky Street, and an alley running through, running north-south between Clay Street and an alley running east-west between Jackson Street and South Sandusky Street, all in Hemingory surveys in the third ward of the city of Tiffin. So at this time, anyone wishing to address council may direct their questions to myself. Okay. If there is no questions, I will close the public hearing, move on to minutes. Minutes from November 17th, regular and committee of the whole were distributed. Are there any other corrections, questions, or deletions on those? Okay. Thank you. We are now under committee reports. Anyone from the Finance Committee?
No reports, Madam President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilmember Dougherty.
I have a report, Madam President. A Law and Community Planning Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, November 25th, 2025, in council chambers. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation number 25-61, which was the cybersecurity policy and any other business that may come before this committee. Attending were councilmembers Cheyenne Thacker, Aaron Jones, Kevin Reesner, Dennis Snee, and myself. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, and Law Director Zach Fowler. Councilman Dougherty called the meeting to order at 5:15 PM. Due to the nature of mayor's request for legislation, 2561 being sensitive information, Councilman Dougherty made a motion to enter into executive session. Councilman Dougherty invited all parties listed above to join in this meeting. Councilman Snee seconded that motion. The motion passed 2 to 0, and the executive session began at 5:16 PM. After all parties were briefed on legislation and after discussion of the cybersecurity policy, Councilman Dougherty made a motion to end the executive session. Councilman Snee seconded that motion, and the motion was passed 2 to 0. We then exited executive session at 5:38 PM. Councilman Dougherty made a motion to have the city law director prepare legislation for mayor's request for legislation number 2561. Councilman Snee seconded that motion. The motion passed 2 to 0, and that ends my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones?
No reports, Madam President.
Personnel and labor relations, Councilmember Hayes?
No report, Madam President.
Recreation and public property, Councilmember Snee?
No report at this time, Madam President.
Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker?
No report, Madam President.
Economic and development, economic development and downtown planning, Councilmember Horniman?
No report, Madam President.
Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? All right, we are now under reports of the officers. His Honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of items. The leaf bag collection, if you've got your leaves all bagged up and they haven't been picked up yet, Wednesday will be the last day for those, so get those out to the curb. Coming up on December the 8th, the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio is holding a public hearing concerning the proposal of AEP rate increases, and I don't think any of us are going to be able to attend since we're scheduling a special city council meeting at the same time. That's going to be on Monday, December the 8th, 6 PM. It's at the Owens Community College in Finley, Ohio. So if you want to have your voice heard about the upcoming AEP rate increase request, that's where you would want to go. Owens Community College in Finley, Ohio, December 8th, 6 PM. Also, before we begin the bulk of tonight's business, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the deep sadness our community continues to feel following the heartbreaking events of November 19th. A tragedy of this magnitude leaves a lasting impact on the families, friends, neighbors, and on all of us who call Tiffin home. As we grieve, let us remember that the strength of our community is shown in how we respond. And over the last two weeks, I've seen Tiffin come together with compassion and support of one another, and I wanted to thank you, all of you, the entire city of Tiffin, for that. So, thank you. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest?
No report, Madam President.
And Director of Finance, Jill Lindenhorst?
Thank you, Madam President. I have one request for legislation tonight. It's to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94. An explanation of that is we are appropriating $5,124.19 to the general fund. These was for grant funds received by the Police Department for the Body Armor Grant Program. $987.15 to the general fund for reimbursement received from EMAC for dispatcher overtime costs incurred during Hurricane Helene. $45,000 to the municipal court pivot program. $11,600 to the capital improvements for a donation from RAD Action Recreation Evolution for the pump track. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And Director of Law, Zach Fowler?
Thank you, Madam President. Just two items. I just wanted to let you know, we did close on the property that is that parking lot by the Deli and Ralphs. So we do have the deed from Cydeck for that. And then I did share your ordinance for the continuation of DORA with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. They've confirmed they have received that and updated their records to show that DORA will continue for another five years. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We are now under written communications.
With mayor's request for legislation number 25-62, sponsorship of Memorial Bench.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation number 25-62 is prepared this evening as resolution 25-51.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F25-51, to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the general fund, Mental Health and Recovery Service Fund, and general capital improvements.
Thank you. Finance Director's request for legislation number F25-51 is prepared this evening as ordinance 25-104.
And that concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself.
I'd like to say this is a first for me, but it's not. Okay. My name is Susan, and I think I know everybody here. I'm here to talk about A Holiday to Remember in Downtown Tiffin this weekend. I gave Mayor Lee some homework that he didn't do. So there's a little pamphlet for everybody to see all the things that are happening. So A Holiday to Remember is this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It kicks off Friday night with the commutery lighting by the collaborative. Before that happens, we have a little ugly sweater contest is what we're calling it. So if you have any littles that you know, encourage them to come downtown. They get to just fill out a ticket, and one random child will be picked to turn the lights on the tree. So we thought that was a good idea to make it fair for everybody and fun. And then as soon as the tree is lit, the fireworks go off, literally. Fireworks will be... What's the word I'm looking for? I don't want to say shot off from... From the east green, over the courthouse, the courthouse itself. And then we have Stitch there, and we have tons of kids' activities for children that night. But I wanted to touch on Saturday. The Community Kitchen is open for free cookie decorating. So if you want to decorate cookies, Lessons and Carols is by Old Trinity Church. That will be Saturday evening. And then is the big night parade that the Kiwanis Club does every year. This year, we have something new. We have an after-party at the KFC. So if you've ever been in a parade, when the parade's over, you look at each other like, what do we do now? Well, now you have something to do. You can come have food and drinks and music. Then Sunday morning, there's breakfast with Santa at the Eagles. It's only $5. And then we are closing our weekend with a new event in downtown Tiffin. It's called Community Carols. We're inviting everybody to come to St. Paul's at 6 o'clock on Sunday evening. We have the rockers, we have the praise band, and then we're ending the weekend with Joy to the World. We thought it was important to just come together at the end and put a nice little bow on it. But the rest of my committee is not here. They're all busy, so I have nothing to do on Monday nights, so I'm here to tell you. And also, I just want to say thank you to Nick, and to Mr. Polly, Chief Polly, and my favorite person in the world, Mr. Chapel, and all the department heads because it's a lot of work. I didn't know that fireworks caused so much chaos, but it will be so worth it. So I just wanted to give everybody an update so you guys all know what's happening when all your people ask you. You have all the answers.
Thank you. That's...
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Thank you. I appreciate the update.
So that's this week? Just clarifying.
Is anyone else wishing to address council this evening? All right, we are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? We are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 2025-50, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. A resolution adopting a cybersecurity program for the city of Tiffin, authorizing the city administrator to take all steps necessary to implement the cybersecurity program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of resolution 25-50.
Resolution number 2025-51, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. A resolution requesting distribution of funds from the Tiffin Recreation and Beautification Endowment Fund at the Tiffin Community Foundation and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of resolution 25-51. Councilmember Dougherty?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of resolution number 2551, which is the sponsorship of the Memorial Bench and suspending city council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of resolution 25-51. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Councilmember Thacker?
I just wanted to add that if this is a small way that we can memorialize such a tragic event in our community, I think it's an easy yes for me.
Couldn't agree more. Councilmember Horniman?
I kind of wanted to defer the city administrator. Really did the line, share the work on this, and really appreciate you pointing him in that direction and helping and doing all the, taking care of all the things and everything.
Agreed.
Agree. I do have one more to add. Sorry. I just felt like it was important that we bring up what an expense our first responders, the people at the hospital, our own city staff, with the police and the fire and EMS, and that they have to see this and take on this on behalf of us as a city. It's important that we also memorialize the contribution that they give to our city in these times.
Agreed. Yes. Councilmember Snee?
Madam President, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, that we, this is definitely, we are to bear one another's burdens, so definitely, something we need to do.
Any other discussion? We will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of 6 to 0, will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 6 to 0, will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Resolution 25-51 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance number 2025-87, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept permanent stormwater easements from various property owners in the city of Tiffin.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 25-87. Councilmember Thacker?
I move for passage of ordinance 2025-87.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 25-87. Is there a second, Councilmember?
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. Motion and a second, any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-87 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance number 2025-88, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, recommend and execute a contract for the 2026 street paving program and city lot number four improvements.
This is the third reading of ordinance 25-88. Councilmember Thacker?
I move for passage of ordinance 2025-88.
There's a motion for passage of ordinance 25-88. Is there a second? Councilmember Snee?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-88 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance number 2025-89, introduced by Dennis Snee. An ordinance authorizing the sale of municipal real property located at the intersection of State Route 224 in Fairlane to Trilogy Real Estate Tiffin LLC, and authorizing the mayor to accept easements from Trilogy Real Estate Tiffin LLC.
This is the third reading of ordinance 25-89. Councilmember Snee?
Yes, I move for passage of ordinance 25-89.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 25-89. Is there a second? Councilmember Dougherty?
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? All right, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-89 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance number 2025-91, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. An ordinance declaring improvements to a certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made to directly benefit such parcel, requiring the owner of the improvements on such parcel to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such serviced payments, approving the compensation agreement with Hopewell Loudon Local School District and related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 570940, 5709.42, and 5709.43, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 25-91.
Amended ordinance number 2025-93, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. An ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, recommend and execute a contract for the construction of the labyrinth project at Hedges Boyer Park, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of amended ordinance 25-93.
Ordinance number 2025-94, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. An ordinance amending Section 505.01 of the codified ordinances to require dogs to be on a leash and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 25-94.
Ordinance number 2025-95, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. An ordinance approving the agreement between the city of Tiffin and Tiffin West Gate Limited, the real property owner of 680 West Market Street, Tiffin, Ohio, for the abatement of certain real property taxes for 12 years, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 25-95.
Ordinance number 2025-96, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. An ordinance responding to petition numbers 2025-01 through 2025-04, vacating two alleys off of Jackson Street running east-west between Fairview Avenue and Jackson Street, an alley running east-west between Jackson Street and South Sandusky Street, and an alley running north-south between Clay Street, and an alley running east-west between Jackson Street and South Sandusky Street, all in Hemingory survey in the third ward of the city of Tiffin, Ohio.
This is the second reading of ordinance 25-96.
Ordinance number 2025-98, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance to budget and make appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Tiffin for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 25-98.
Ordinance number 2025-99, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 2024-95, the city pay ordinance, to establish appropriate rates of compensation for certain city employees to comply with the state of Ohio minimum wage law, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 25-99.
Ordinance number 2025-100, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2026 budget ordinance number 2025-98 to authorize the transfer of funds and the payment of bond and loan principal and interest, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 25-100.
Ordinance number 2025-101, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2026 budget ordinance number 2025-98 to authorize the transfer of funds from the 101 General Fund to the 242 Park and Recreation Fund, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 25-101.
Ordinance number 2025-102, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2026 budget ordinance number 2025-98 to authorize the transfer of funds from the 552 Sewer Revenue Fund to the 557 Combined Sewer Separation Fund, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 25-102.
Ordinance number 2025-103, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2026 budget ordinance number 2025-98 to authorize the transfer of funds from the 101 General Fund to the 331 Capital Improvements Fund, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 25-103.
Ordinance number 2025-104. An ordinance amending the 2025 budget ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Police Department Budget, Mental Health and Recovery Service Fund, and Parks Capital Fund.
This is the first reading of ordinance 25-104. Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 2025-104, suspending city council's three reading rule.
There's a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 25-104. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Horniman?
It's my understanding, we got an explanation for the finding, but this is mostly, this is mostly grant money and reimbursements and such and everything that we're transferring back into there to get it into.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we can first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of 6 to 0, will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-104 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
And that concludes the legislation.
We are now under other business.
Is this the time at which we would like to discuss the budget ordinance, which was read 2025-98? Since we have Chief Polly and Chief Chapel here, representing the police and fire departments, and we could focus on that area of the budget with our questions, if you've looked over those. You know, since in all of the departments, yet we have, as the city administrator mentioned earlier, have not settled on contract negotiations with the unions. And so, none of the wage increases are currently in the budgets that you have received, that you probably have a copy in front of you right now. But everything else, I believe, is pretty well up to date. And if you have questions on any of that, the police department budget from the general fund starts on page 18. With the personal services wages, and then following that was the benefits and insurance. So, I don't know if you want to start off with questions, or if, Chief Polly, if you have some things that you just would like to alert us to that may be different from last year, that would be great. We don't necessarily have to go through every single item, just the ones that
Sure.
you think would be significant.
Okay. Well, just from off the top, obviously, some increases that are going to happen will be in wages, overtime, and then training, overtime. That's going to, that's contractual. So, that will all be bumped up for the police, for dispatchers, and for our civilian employees. I guess a few other things that you could look at, take a look at. The canine program is an area that I'm increasing or asking to increase. That is 101-220-5694. It's on page 20. I'm increasing that, or asking to increase that by 2,000. The reason for that is I applied for and received a $25,000 grant for an electronic sniffing canine for next year. And so, most everything, the training itself, the dog, all those expenses will be paid for in full. The initial vet and food will all be paid for. The equipment will all be paid for through that grant. The, why I'm asking it to go up a couple of thousand dollars will be for any unforeseen issues that might happen with the dog, for a vet visit, and then food. So, I increase, I'm asking that that increase for, for $2,000. But the payoff, I think, in the end will be fantastic. For those that don't know, electronic sniffing canine uses the preservative on all electronic equipments. It smells that, that odor of that chemical on the preservative. And so, it can find micro SD cards, phones, computers, anything that may be in a search warrant that we can't find, we can put that dog through the house and it will find it. And I have some experience with this. We utilized a electronic sniffing dog when I was with the Bureau of Criminal Investigation, and it works out fantastic. On top of that, this is a dual-trained dog. It will also be a comfort therapy dog, so that when we have kids that, that need to chat with us about something that's, that's not great, that maybe we have that dog there for them. The dog will be here every day for the guys and men and women of the police department, because we can use a little bit of that too, obviously. And, and so, no, I think it's a real good use of, of that increase in, in funding. Some other changes, just to be aware of, the One Ohio Dare Fund that, or we used the opioid fund there, that is on page 39. Council is good enough to appropriate $20,000 into that fund, and what we've done in the past is split that up into four different categories. And I'm, I'm just keeping that same amount of money, I'm just moving where that money is at based on our needs now. Initially, it was we needed training, we needed all the equipment, we needed that sort of thing. Now, it's more supplies to get, you know, stuff for the kids and books and that kind of thing. So, it's just some movement of money there. And then, finally, a couple of areas that I'm asking for additional funds would be in the capital fund. So, that's in, that's on page 46. And there, in capital equipment, I'm asking for $80,000. And the reason for that increase is twofold. The dispatch room, our dispatch communications room, the center itself needs upgraded in a lot of different areas, both with the components themselves, in some of the equipment that's in there, but also just aesthetically, it is, it is not manageable. And so, just to make it easier to navigate within the room itself. So, part of that money would go towards those upgrades and making that a better functioning, a more efficient center. And then, I am looking at LPR cameras, or license plate reader cameras, for the city, citywide. And that is, for those that don't know, so, a license plate reader will be able to help the police in finding hit-skip vehicles. Vehicles that were involved in a crime and are leaving the city or coming into the city will be able to identify. Reckless or impaired drivers will be able to identify. It also will help us with amber alerts and missing and endangered children and adults. So, I think it's a good use of city funds. And so, some of that funding would go towards implementing that as well in 2026. And then, finally, an increase in vehicles last year. We typically rotate vehicles out, and we rotate two out, two of our oldest vehicles out, and get new, two, two new vehicles for the fleet, the police. We do a good job, and Lieutenant Windsor does a fantastic job of maintaining our fleet, but we do, we are, we work these, these cars hard. And so, instead of nickeling and diming us in vehicle maintenance, it's better to just keep that kind of on schedule and rotating out. Last year, we did one car. This year, I would ask that we replace two cars in the fleet. Those are the major things. Everything else is basically contractual or an operational necessity. I will also say that the police department secured external funding just to help with, with, with extra things around that, that perhaps the budget couldn't meet in the neighborhood of $130,000 in 2025. So, that was with forfeiture funds, competitive grants that we applied for and received, as well as community partnerships out there. So, we're trying to bring some of that funding in as well to help supplement some of the operational needs that we have. Yes?
Chief, just one question. The cameras you guys want to install, are those fixed cameras or are those mounted on the actual cruisers?
Nope, they'll be fixed in various locations within the city. We brought in the company to take a look, and we did a site survey of probably 12 locations. The likelihood is we wouldn't put cameras in all 12 locations, but maybe half of those, at least to get started, to see, you know, where we're at. We tested these cameras out for about a month. They're fantastic, what they can do. So, I'm really excited about doing that for the city, doing that for the police department.
Chief, would you share who you tested that on?
So, so we, we had to mount the cameras somewhere where we could have two different directions. We wanted to look at, the, the ability of these cameras are twofold as well. They'll read a, they'll read a camera, or they'll read a license plate, excuse me, or a partial license plate. But it'll also, we can free-form into the search program, looking for a dented, red Buick, you know, car that, you know, with a, with, missing a hubcap. You type that in, and it will search on those cameras for that car, and it'll bring it up. It also does facial recognition, and so if you have a person of interest, you can type that person's name in or scan a picture. I wanted to test it out on someone that might be frequently moving around that area. And so, I put in the city administrator's face, and it probably hit 2,000 times on our camera of the city administrator coming and going from his office and walking down the street. And so, it works really, it works really well. It's pretty cool.
I almost feel a little, feel stupid asking this one, but, I mean, with all that capability, especially facial recognition, there's some good programs out there for that. But, but it works well at night, night vision, it can read?
Yes, yes. And then glaring sun. So, the camera itself can figure out all of that, and yeah, it works really well.
Would you like to see this?
Absolutely. I have on video, I have some of the things that it does, and so, I can certainly make sure that you're, you're able to see what it does, for sure. Yeah.
The canine.
In the past, I know Officer Liz Miller has kind of headed up taking care of the canine that we had, so the new dog that will be coming in as well, is she taking care of that, or is there another officer that stepped up to the plate to do that?
Yeah, you typically don't want one handler handling two dogs. So, she deals with the, with Leo, who's our narcotics and tracking dog for the department, and does a fantastic job for us there. And so, Liz and Officer Miller and Leo will continue doing that. But the other dog will be handled by Detective Eric England, primarily because a lot of the work that Detective England does within the realm of child exploitation cases and also drug work, this fits right into it. And so, he'll be able to bring the dog in every single day to the department, to his office. The dog will just roam, roam the department while he's working, and then be a working dog when he wants it to work.
Okay, interesting, thank you.
Senator Jones?
Thanks, Chief. I just have a question, just, I guess it's more for the benefit of the public, these, these cameras, these are just investigative tools, correct? I mean, you're not going to be, you're not going to be staring at these all day, right?
No, 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 no. We're not, we're not spying on the community at all. This is, this is, in fact, we would only be utilizing these in the event of, of some sort of incident that we need to, to look at them.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the people heard that.
I appreciate that.
That we're not spying on them. And one other question, what, what is the kind of dog that, the breed that you're getting?
It's, it's going to be a lab. And we, we, Eric England and I, Detective England and I, went to Indianapolis to visit the training facility, and also to look at the various canines out there. And so, I think we've selected one, it's going to be a black lab, a young black lab, a great disposition, and does good work, so looking forward to it.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I do have one more question, actually. In terms of the vehicles, do you know what type of vehicles you guys are getting this time around?
Yeah, likely it's going to be a, an Explorer. Again, the Explorer seem to do the best work for us. They're, they're big, we can hold a lot of equipment in them, and they last a long time, as well as the, the trucks do as well. But right now, our trucks are rock solid, we're still, still doing really well with those, and so there's no need to rotate those out yet.
Thank you.
Lord Ritter?
Yeah, thank you. Not so much for you, Chief, but Councilmember Jones, with these license plate cameras, you as council would have that ability to place any kind of rules or regulations on the use of those. So, bear in mind, if, if you have those kind of concerns, council's more than welcome to set the rules on how they're used, the data that's collected, what's done with that, so on and so forth. But you would have that power if so desired.
I think, they're not traffic cameras, right? It's different than like a traffic camera that you're looking for speed, or they are doing that as well? You said something about-
Well, they're not looking for speed, they're not doing that at all. They're only looking for what we input into, into the program itself. And so, if we put in a partial license plate because we had, had a crime where that license plate was involved in, that's when we activate those, and they would be, be looking for that at that point. But otherwise, no.
The only reason I asked is because you mentioned like reckless driving or something like that. Is it because you, like, maybe there was an incident that there was a reckless driver, and then now you're trying to find them?
Yeah, so, yeah, so let me clarify that.
I guess I'm just trying to understand the-
So, sorry, yeah, no, thank you. So, it would be oftentimes, so the sheriff's office dispatch might give us a call and say, hey, it was reported out in the county somewhere, reckless driver's coming into your, your, your direction, it's a, a red Kia, and, and so be on the lookout. And so, this would help us identify where it's coming in at.
Okay, interesting, thank you.
Yeah, completely. It's, it's funny, you brought it up last week, I was just told by my brother-in-law, who's an officer at a neighboring county city. He said those, those cameras are like their number one tool, it's like it drives so many of their investigations, like so many times, it's like, this thing happened over here, well, we have that person on camera, you know, down the road this many minutes later.
Yeah.
And they, they're just able to tie so much to it. So, yeah, as soon as you brought that up, I was like, okay, nice. Yeah, I've, I've been told these are super useful, even for just the officers and, and you know, their day-to-day stuff to kind of, you know, explore an investigation and whatnot, just to keep things moving.
Yeah, it really does elevate our department up into where we need to be, you know, for the future. So, no, I'm looking forward to, to implementing those.
Any other questions? Chief Polly? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we also have Chief Chapel here from the Tiffin Fire and Rescue. And if you want to go back to the general fund, at the beginning of the fire and rescue budgets is on page 21. And once again, the new wages are not updated yet, as we have not reached a conclusion with the contract negotiations there. But everything else should be pretty well in line with what's going to be happening in 2026. So, Chief Chapel, if there's any items of significance that you'd like to point out to City Council, that would be great.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Council President, appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about our, our numbers here. One of the things, I guess we can start with, as the mayor indicated, obviously wages are somewhat up in the air pending the, the finalization of the contract negotiations. One of the things that has been brought up in the past is our overtime budget. We're again asking for $500,000 for that. I just wanted to explain where that number is kind of born from. Within the collective bargaining agreement with the union, right now, each of the firefighters receives nine paid holidays throughout the year that they can use as overtime pay for a 24-hour period, which would be one shift. That contractual holiday pay comes right from that overtime budget, and it accounts for roughly 60% of that number. So, really, that, of that 500,000, there's less than 200,000 that is actually for like a crew fill-in type overtime due to a sick leave or other absence. It also is where we pay for recalls if we have a fire, when we have multiple EMS incidents, that sort of situation, other contractual obligations that we have that necessitate the payment of overtime. So, it's, it's not just $500,000 of raw overtime that we're paying right out of the gate. So, I just wanted to try and explain that upfront first.
Thank you. It took me a few sessions with Chief Chapel, going through all of the things that go into the overtime calculations for me to understand exactly. And I'm sure that I don't get it all exactly correct, but it helps to, to know that it's divided up, it's not just, hey, we, we need you to stay over or, or call in. It's, it's a lot more than that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's been 20 years, 21 years, I'm still learning, so. On page 22 in the 5300 Professional Services grouping, 101-230-5390, there's other professional services. This is probably the most sizable increase of my entire budget request. The last few years, we, we've had around $10,000 in that. That money is used to- The last few years, we've had around $10,000, and that money is used to pay for our EMS medical director, which is a requirement for us to provide EMS services. We have to have a physician that oversees our EMS operations and establishes our protocols which we operate from. So that service, we had a change with the physician a couple of years ago when Dr. Fitzpatrick from Tiffin Mercy ER retired. Our new medical doctor, our medical control doctor, Dr. Sauber, has been fantastic to work with. The consortium that he is a part of, and now we are as well, offers phenomenal training resources for the members of our department, and their protocols allow for us to be much more aggressive with the care that we're able to provide to the sick and injured that we encounter. So we still have that. The reason for the increase is actually, we've talked with another department in northwest Ohio that has been using a service that does quality assurance reviews of EMS reports that we generate. We do quite a few of those a year. The benefit of this to the department is right now, our deputy chief, he spends roughly half of his time going through and digging through the EMS reports, making sure that everything is being thoroughly documented, there's adherence to the protocol, that everything is appropriately coded and entered into the report for billing. So there's a lot of work that goes into it, and then also trying to take all that information and look for broader overall trends to look for opportunities to better train the members of the department if there's something that we find and identify that is lacking. So it is a very time-consuming effort. So as our call volumes continue to increase each year, and kind of shifting gears now to fire inspections, we have about 900 buildings in the city that we do fire inspections in every year. I've talked about that in my annual report previously. Of those 900 inspections, there's about 400 additional re-inspections that also occur because of things that we find wrong that we have to follow up to make sure are corrected. So with the increase in call volume and this, you know, pretty constant number of inspections that we encounter each year, it becomes very, very difficult for our crews to get out there and actually do those inspections in between calls, in between trying to train, trying to have, maybe have a little bit of downtime in your 24-hour shift. So what the goal would be is to shift that EMS QA task to a third-party outfit outside of the department, let them monitor everything. They actually do a fantastic job of following up with individual members of the department to discuss, you know, inefficiencies with their charting and things that they could do better. So it's not just department-wide, hey, here's some things that everyone can work on. It's no, here's what you specifically can work on, and you meet individually via video call with a representative from that company. So it frees up a lot of time in the deputy chief's schedule, which would allow for him and even myself to get out, try and, we would do the re-inspections, allowing our crews to still go out, do the initial fire inspection. So they're getting the familiarity with the buildings, so we don't lose that component, because it really is a training thing as much for us as it is a fire code enforcement issue. So they're still able to see the buildings. We just handle the follow-up if there's a need for a re-inspection. Alternatives to this, using this third-party resource, would be looking to hire in a part-time fire inspector to the department, which obviously comes with its own cost, trying to hire in somebody else to do the QA service in-house. We just, it's going to cost us a lot more than the $40,000 roughly that this service would be looking to cost us at this point. So I just felt it was a justifiable thing that would help improve efficiency, not just for the administration of the department, but for each of the crews, and allows us to kind of do everything better overall, whether it's inspections, whether it's EMS, and the charting. The better the EMS charts are, the better it protects us from potential litigation, which is good, not just for the individual that wrote the report and was on that call, but also that we as a city could be exposed to that litigation. And it may also help improve, continue to increase the EMS revenue that we have been seeing over the last few years as well. So that's why I wanted that. Moving through in the 5400 grouping, the 5443 maintenance vehicles, 10% increase there, going from 50 to 55,000. This year has been brutal, was how I described it to the mayor and city administrator. We have added additional funds to that line for vehicle repairs twice this year. The last round of money that was just added should, we'll all keep our fingers crossed collectively, I hope, should be enough to get us through the end of the year. Engine one, our primary engine downtown, that's 10 years old. We just got it back from being worked on, and that was a $15,000 bill. So it is not an inexpensive thing. I believe, though, and I'm really hopeful, that many of the repairs that we had to put in to the different fire apparatus this year are very long-term fixes, brake replacements, some of the pump issues that we have worked on, those are not a commonly reoccurring issue. So I believe 2025 to be more of an anomaly than a trend, and I'm hopeful, as much as I can be, that we won't hopefully see another year like this for a while. But we'll see. The fleet is aging, and we've got some other things that we have to tackle before we can address that. That's really all I had significant in the general fund lines. When we look at the capital lines on page 45 in the 330 grouping, we've got our vehicle payment, that's an annual payment for the 2018 Quint that we have. We did receive notification about a month ago that we were selected for yet another AFG grant, which is fantastic. This one is to help us purchase six sets of turnout gear at a cost of just under $29,000. So of that, we encumber all those funds into the budget first to make the purchase, and then we request reimbursement from FEMA. The city's match is 5% on that. For about $1,400, we get almost $29,000 of turnout gear. So it's a pretty good win. And then from there, the only other big request that I had was something for the stations, or station, Station 1 specifically, was in the 331, 230, 5722, a request for $35,000. Along Monroe Street here at Station 1, there's five bay doors. Four of those have fire department vehicles behind them. One of them has one of Chief Pauli's, of course, because you just can't let us have it all. But those doors, if you've not been by, they're brown, rather drab, if I dare say, faded. They've been bumped into a time or two as well. It just kind of makes the front of that station look overly dated. I had a mock-up done of what replacing those doors with like some red doors might look like, and I think it really makes it look and feel like a more modern 90-year-old fire station instead of an old 90-year-old fire station. So it's something that we're looking at doing this next year, and just kind of intending to modernize the facility a little bit more, because we'll certainly be working out of it for a few more years at least. With that, I'll open up to any questions.
You answered most of mine.
Well, thank you. I try and be concise.
Any questions for Chief Chapel?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just something I floated to the fire chief. I'm going to look to see if there's a potential for some funding, maybe to cover those doors and maybe some other doors. As you're aware, we have funds that come in through NOPEC that we collect, and those are for energy-efficient upgrades. I would say that new doors of any kind are going to provide more energy efficiency for the department than what is currently on there. So we'll try to make that ask for next year. That may be something we try to pursue. It's good to have that in the budget, just in case we aren't able to get those funds. But regardless, we're going to try to leverage that if possible.
Makes sense. Thank you.
I just want to point out one other thing to City Council members. You might see at the end in our capital fund here on page 47, a line item called Fire Vehicle. So that Fire Vehicle Fund is, we transfer $100,000 into that every year for the future purchase of needed fire vehicles, ambulances, and fire trucks. So that's what that's in there for. And that was established, Nick, I don't know how far back you know that that goes, but...
That's been there for quite a while.
It's been going there for quite a while.
Yeah, it used to be a lesser amount, and it was increased quite a while ago also to that 100,000 annually.
And we were able to use part of the funds from that to purchase the deputy chief's vehicle for last year.
That's correct.
So, which happened to be a good thing. No loans, no leases, just to purchase.
That's helpful. Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Chapel?
It's not really a question, but if you're going to change the doors, don't forget to go to the ABR for approval.
Yeah, that was on the agenda.
Yeah, so I don't know if they require a certain paint or...
If the red doors won't work, then we can replace them with a newer drab brown instead.
Are they fire or retardant?
Let's hope so.
Okay.
But I don't want to test it either.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Chief.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, continuing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if anybody else, as you mentioned earlier, and I believe, no, you mentioned this, if you have any other questions about anything else that comes up as you go through the budget, if you could submit those to me or Nick, so that we can kind of plan ahead for what kind of questions need to be answered, so we can get a better handle on that.
Perfect. Continuing through other business, want to ensure I announced a special meeting that we've discussed for December 8 at 5:30 PM in council chambers, and this will be for the purpose of a second budget reading, but specifically, I'm just going to go through, because we're going to add a few other ordinances and resolutions to that. So we will include a reading for Resolution 25-50, Ordinance 25-93, Ordinance 25-94, and then the ordinances 25-98 through 25-103. Is there any other business to come before council this evening? All right, seeing none, we can adjourn. Thank you, guys.